Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, June 23. If you are watching live on Monday, June 23, we encourage your comments by phone at 769-1677. As always, you can watch us either on cable TV, Verizon, or Cablevision, or at PCTV76.org, where we webstream live, and you can also pick up, within a couple of days, a webcast that allows you to watch previous meetings. Our next scheduled meeting is this coming Wednesday, June 25, where we have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission regarding the Toll Brothers project. Specific item under discussion, although other items may get discussed as well, is the question of whether or not Toll Brothers ought to be required or expected to add a sidewalk in front of the project on Washington Avenue, which would not connect to a sidewalk either to the north or the south. So that is the primary reason for the joint session with the Planning Commission on June 25 in this room at 7:30. Our next work session is Monday, June 30, where we will be doing a work session on long-term goals and planning initiatives. And then our next regular meeting is Monday, July 14, at 8:00 PM with a work session at 7:00. That would be two days after July 12, which is the date of the 10th Annual Pleasantville Music Festival. So get yourself to PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com, read all about it, buy your tickets to the 10th Annual Pleasantville Music Festival, which is on Saturday, July 12. And a couple of announcements I wanted to make. One is those of you who have looked ahead at the agenda, we'll see that the third resolution tonight appoints Robert Hughes, who is here tonight with us as our new building inspector. He will replace the retiring Mike Testa, who we honored at a retirement dinner last week, which was a great event for a great guy and a well-deserved opportunity for everybody to gather and thank Mike for his 29-plus years of service to the Village of Pleasantville. Also wanted to note, as we announced the last time, that last week there was a text, a test of our Code Red Emergency Notification System. And those of you who have actually signed up for it will have gotten a message in whatever means you chose, telephone call, text message, et cetera. Hopefully that is the case. Good opportunity to remind everyone that if you haven't signed up, you should. Go to the Pleasantville-NY.gov website. In the left column is the Code Red symbol, and you can click into it and register and get emergency messages in whatever form you choose, email, text, et cetera. A very, very useful thing that we will only use for emergency messages. We encourage everybody who didn't get such a call this past week to sign up and make sure they do. Then the last thing I wanted to mention is a sad note, and that is that many of us know Mike Goldstein, who is the third-generation Goldstein owning and running The Art of Wine. His son Graham now runs it as well. Mike passed away at the age of 83, I guess about a week ago. Pleasantville High School graduate, longtime figure in the Village of Pleasantville, a character in the best of all possible ways, and a person who left us suddenly and who will be very much missed by the Village of Pleasantville. So The Art of Wine and that building, I think, is going on almost a century of existence. In fact, it's, I think, one year short of a century of existence here in the Village of Pleasantville. So that's a pretty darn good record. So goodbye to Mike. We'll miss you. Anybody else have anything they wanted to announce? Nope. Want to talk about your duck race?
Yeah, we had the -- thank you very much. Not on the agenda.
Since we have you as a captive audience, I don't want you to miss this.
But we're happy to talk about something like that. The duck race, we had the 30th Annual Duck Race benefiting the Pleasantville Swim Team on Father's Day. It was a huge success. We had over 750 ducks raced in the duck race this year, another record. This was the first year that we actually had tailgating going on prior to the duck race. We had folks putting lawn chairs out.
Fake ducks.
They were fake ducks, for the record. They were fake ducks. And again, we just really thank everybody who came out. A lot of kids, a lot of folks had a lot of fun, a lot of extraordinary costume design on the part of many people in town. Jonathan here was our judge this year.
Thankless job.
And I'd be grateful to thank you that day. I appreciate it very much for hopping in.
Thankless job. I've done it. It's not a thankless job.
Judging the ducks.
Great judge.
And again, we just thank you for doing it and hope that we see you all next year.
All right. Thank you for that. So we have a number of resolutions, obviously. Number 107, the benchmark one, is the one that most of you are here for, but we're going to zip our way through the other ones, especially 103, which is the appointment of Robert, who is our new building inspector. So Colleen, number 101.
Resolve that pre-check register dated June 23, 2014, covering pre-check numbers 78061 through 7809, SIS 6, for fiscal year 2013-14, has been reviewed, and they are hereby approved as listed below. Coming from the General Fund, the Special Purpose Fund, the Water Fund, the Refuge Fund, the Capital Fund, the Pool Fund, and the Trust and Agency Fund totaling $151,0189.30. And further resolve that the pre-check register dated June 23, 2014, covering pre-check numbers 78097 through 78191 for fiscal year 2014-15, has been reviewed, and they are hereby approved as listed below. Coming from the General Fund, the Special Purpose Fund, the Water Fund, the Refuge Fund, the Capital Fund, the Pool Fund, and the Trust and Agency Fund totaling $607,117.32.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions on the check register?
No.
No. All in favor?
Aye.
I approve. 102, Mindy.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, June 9, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections on the minutes of the June 9 meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
I approve. 103, your moment.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves, or hereby appoints, excuse me, Robert Hughes to the position of building inspector effective July 7, 2014, at a salary of $85,000 from the Silver Service Eligibility List 65-468. Cit appointment is subject to the rules and regulations of Westchester County's Department of Human Resources, which includes a probationary period of not less than 12 weeks to a maximum of 52 weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
As mentioned, Mike is retiring after 29 years of service. He'll be retiring near the end of July, and Robert, in his resolution, is appointed July 7, which will provide an opportunity for both to work together in the transition. He comes to us from Marinec, where he's an assistant building inspector and was a standout person in our interview process, and delighted to welcome you. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, sir.
Very good.
The community always comes out like this for New York.
I'm really special.
You don't know how special.
Excuse me.
See, 104.
104. Motion, no, no, that's me. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the following donations toward senior citizens programs. The Conten -- there we go, finally catching. The Contemporary Club of Pleasantville, $250, and anonymous of $60.
Is there a second?
Second.
We continue to get generous contributions to the senior citizens program and thank the Contemporary Club and the anonymous donor. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 105.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby declares the following skate park equipment as surplus: shed, generator, forklift, and ramps, and further authorizes the sale of said equipment.
Is there a second?
Second.
The Village, some years back, went into a joint venture with the Town of Newcastle for a skateboard park, which existed in the corner of the commuter lot at the Chappaqua Train Station. As the years passed, it became less popular, and the location was never ideal from the standpoint of how our skateboarders as well. The decision was made by both communities a couple of years ago to close down the skateboard park, and we're now authorizing the surplus, the equipment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, 106. Mindy.
Sorry, I have to get there. Should've gotten there early. Apologize. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby opens the promotional field to sergeants and eligible police officers to participate in the police lieutenant exam.
Is there a second?
Second.
This does not compel us to hire a new or additional lieutenant. It simply allows the test to be taken by our officers to become qualified to do it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Okay. Resolution 107, let me just preface that, this is the resolution for which you have all arrived, the subject of the Benchmark Senior Living application. It is a little different from our normal circumstance because we're in possession of a petition from residents that requires a supermajority. That is based on our Village Zoning Code, Section 185-58, Section H, which reads as follows. Required vote of the Village Board of Trustees for amendment under protest. In case of protest against such change, signed by the owners of 20% or more of the area of land included in such proposed change, or by the owners of 20% or more of the land immediately adjacent, extending 100 feet therefrom, or by the owners of 20% or more of the land directly opposite thereto, extending 100 feet from the street frontage of such opposite land, such amendment shall not become effective except by the favorable vote of four-fifths of the members of the Village Board of Trustees. So we are in possession of such a petition, which we have reviewed and believed to be valid, and therefore, in order for the benchmark zoning change to be approved, it will require four positive votes, not three. It is not our intention to engage public discussion of this. We have been through hours and hours of that, and all of us have gathered together many times, and we certainly feel as though we have had a full and open discussion, and the record is complete. As you know, we closed the public record some time back. We have since received a number of communications of various forms, all of which we have read, despite the fact that the formal public record is now closed, and I can assure you that the five of us are cognizant of pretty much everything that has been said. So it is a long resolution, and we're going to divide up the pages of it. So Jonathan will move it and then read the first four pages, and then we'll move around the table so as not to wind any of us.
Get comfortable. Approving the -- so this is 214-107, approving the petition by Benchmark Senior Living, Inc., in adopting Local Law 5 of 2014 to amend the zoning code and the zoning map of the Village of Pleasantville to, one, create an elder care community, the EC Floating District, within the village, along with enacting siting and development criteria for any facilities permitted thereunder, and, two, rezone an approximately 3.9-acre portion of the premises known as 70 Bedford Road in the Village of Pleasantville and currently designated as Section 99, Spot 15, Block 3, Lot 67, of the Village of Pleasantville's tax assessment map, from the single-family RRR district, Triple R district, to the EC district. Motion made by the trustees and duly adopted. The following other village initiatives hereby put forth for adoption, whereas on February 7, 2013, the village received a petition from Zarin and Steinmetz on behalf of Benchmark Senior Living for amendments to the zoning ordinance of the Village of Pleasantville concerning lands within the village, specifically an approximately 3.9-acre portion of the real property known as 70 Bedford Road. Whereas contained in the petition, the petitioner is seeking the following legislative amendments: one, as I discussed, the amendment to the village zoning ordinance to add a new Article 6-8, creating an elder care facility; and, two, the amendment to the village zoning map to rezone the site from Triple R to EC, to an EC district. Whereas at the time that the petition was filed, the applicant proposed to construct the site, to construct at the site, a new four-story assisted living residence containing approximately 87 dwelling units, providing housing to seniors in the community and the vicinity. And whereas the proposed construction of the new assisted living residence at the site will require site plan and subdivision approval to be issued by the Planning Commission of the Village of Pleasantville. And whereas the petition was accompanied by a full environmental assessment form, Part 1, together with a supplemental information in EAF prepared by John Meyer Consulting dated February 7, 2013, provided additional, provided information pertaining to the petition amendments and the project. And whereas the petition was also accompanied by a preliminary, preliminary site plan, site layout plan, a conceptual site section, a conceptual perceptive plan, and a traffic and parking study, all related to the project and prepared by JMC, all dated Feb. 7, 2013. Whereas submitting the petition to the applicant and the development team appeared before the Village Board on December 3, 2012, in a pre-submission meeting to review the development and rezoning concepts pertaining to the action, the applicant's initial market analysis of the viability of developing and operating an assisted living site. And whereas during the pre-submission meeting on December 3, 2012, members of the public and neighbors residing in the vicinity of the site were provided an opportunity to address the Village Board and express their concerns regarding traffic and compatibility of the applicant's proposed use with the residential character of the surrounding community. And whereas subsequently, the applicant became aware of the concerns expressed by the Village Board regarding whether the proposal to rezone the site constituted illegal spot zoning and how the action compared to the village's comprehensive plan for development. And whereas the applicant provided the village with its legal counsel and with an analysis of the consistency of the applicant's rezoning proposal with the applicable law governing rezoning to accommodate well-considered planning goals to provide residential resources for the community's senior population. And whereas on February 11, 2013, the applicant and its development team appeared before the Village Board and presented the petition, its concept for the project, and supporting information relating to all aspects of the action, including the presentation of JMC, from the JMC, regarding its initial evaluation of traffic conditions on the roadway and the vicinity of the site, and the ability of these roadways to accommodate the anticipated traffic generated by the project. And whereas the petitioner is also indicated to the Village Board during the February 11, 2013, meeting that prior to the submission of the petition to the Board, petitioners and its development team conducted a meeting with the public, where numerous neighbors residing at the site, residing in the vicinity of the site, including many residing on Maple Hill Road, were able to identify potential concerns regarding the design of the project. And whereas a result, whereas a result of the meeting with the neighbors, petitioners modified the proposed entrance to the site such that the new driveway would be developed connecting the proposed facility directly to Bedford Road, as opposed to using Maple Hill Road to access the site. And whereas pursuant to Section 617-6, the Regulations of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, known as SECR, as soon as an agency receives an application for funding or approval of an action, it must, among other things, make a preliminary classification under SECR. And whereas under SECR, the Village Board determined the act should be classified as unlisted. Whereas pursuant to Section 617 dot six, B3 of the SECR regulations, when an agency proposes to fund or approve an unlisted action, it must, as soon as possible, transmit Part 1 of the AAF and a copy of any application as received to all potentially involved agencies. Whereas action, whereas Article 20, geez, 11 of the Village Zoning Ordinance, you wait until you do this, requires the Village Board, or refer the proposed amendments to the Planning Commission for report and recommendation before the public hearing is held on the amendments by the Village Board. Whereas on February 11, 2013, the Village Board adopted Resolutions 2013-35 and 2013-36, declaring its intent as lead agency for review of action under SECR. And, two, referring the petition, amendments, and all supporting materials related to the action to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation. Whereas on February 25, 2013, the Village Board adopted Resolution 2013-41, retaining BFJ Planning, a professional consulting firm, providing the village with expert planning, environmental, and traffic services to assist in its review of the action. Whereas the Planning Commission, at its regularly stated, scheduled meeting on February 27, 2013, met with the applicant and its development team to review and discuss the action, and also more supporting material submitted to the village by the applicant as of this date, including a presentation by the applicant's traffic engineer regarding its initial findings regarding the ability for the area roadways to sufficiently process the anticipated traffic generated by the facility. Whereas during February 27, 2013, meeting, the Planning Commission questioned whether the project could be developed in a manner that is consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods, and recommended that the petitioner and its development team explore mitigation measures to address the proposed height and bulk of the proposed facility, as well as the ability to screen the site from adjacent neighbors, and asked that the applicant present the village with a visual assessment evaluating such issues. Whereas on March 8, 2013, petitioner submitted to the Planning Commission and Village Board a draft zoning and text amendment reflecting comments from the Village Board and Planning Commission as of March 13, and setting forth its proposed language for the EC district regulations to be enacted in connection with the amendments. And whereas on March 13, 2013, the Planning Commission, during a regularly scheduled meeting, continued its review and discussion of the action and supporting materials submitted by the village and the applicant and its design team as of this date, including a proposed language for the EC district regulation. Whereas on March 13, 2013, the Planning Commission recommended the act could provide more data supporting the proposed parking ratio from similarly sized facilities in the region, including more stringent locational criteria in the amendment, and lower the maximum height permitted under the amendment, including reducing the allowable distance from commercial and personnel service establishments to a quarter of a mile, as well as including a separation distance provision prohibiting two sites within a half a mile of each other be included within the EC district. And whereas on March 25, 2013, the Village Board received a comment letter from the Westchester Community Planning Board consenting to the Village Board serving as lead agency, encouraging the village to explore opportunities to connect the village, connect the facility to the old village through sidewalks and bus routes, ensure that the amendments are consistent with the village's comprehensive plan, as well as explore with the applicant I&amp;I mitigation to offset increased sewage flow to the county sewer infrastructure. And whereas on March 28, 2013, the Village Board received a letter from the New York State Department of Transportation consenting to the Board, serving as a lead agency, and indicating the applicant's proposed design would require highway work permit. Whereas on April 15, 2013, the Planning Commission provided the Village Board with minutes from its February 11, 2013, and the March 13, 2013, regular meeting, as well as the commission-specific written comments on the action pursuant to Article 11 of the Village Zoning Ordinance. And whereas on July 16, 2013, petitioner submitted materials to the Village Board as indicated in the text here. Whereas certain aspects of the project and amendments are reflected in the petitioner's submission from July 16, 2013, had been modified as a result of comments from the public, neighboring property owners, the Village Board, and the Planning Commission, and BFJ, including the reduction of the proposed assisted living residence from four stories to three, and, two, limiting the application of the amendments to those properties located within a quarter mile of the existing commercial establishments in the village, three, requiring any two sites in the EC district must be separated from each other by at least half a mile, and four, including new landscape buffer and screening requirements in the EC district in regulation. Whereas the Village Board requested the applicant to conduct a comprehensive visual assessment study to ascertain whether the project would impact neighboring properties and overall consistency with the character of the surrounding area. And whereas on July 22, the petitioner and its development team met with the Village Board and interested members of the public to present a multi-platform digital imaging visual assessment of the project, demonstrating the views of the proposed three-story assisted living residence from adjacent properties and roadways, such that the Village Board and public could evaluate potential visual impacts of the project, as well as screening capabilities provided by topography, open space, vegetation, and vegetation at the site.
Good job.
Handoff.
I'll take it from there.
So, Lee, I should have said at the outset, in a few cases here, we are shortening some of this. The full detail is in the record and is available on the web, as it was on our agenda to begin with. Our purpose in going through this is to make clear the sequence of events and the detail that went into the review that will result in tonight's vote.
Whereas petitioner's visual assessment was made available to the public and was presented at subsequent Village Board meetings, including a joint work session with the Planning Commission. Whereas during the Village Board's July 22, 2013, meeting with petitioner, various members of the public, including residents living on Maple Hill Road, were provided with the opportunity to ask questions of petitioner and its professional consultants regarding the action, as well as request that the Village Board seek more information about the project. Whereas during the Village Board's July 22, 13, meeting, the applicant's traffic engineer presented the revised findings of JMC's analyses, establishing the ability of intersections in the vicinity of the site to accommodate any anticipated additional traffic generated by the facility, backed by various publications from professional traffic expert organizations, as well as traffic and parking counts conducted at facilities operated by the applicant of similar size and programming within the region, as well as a proposal to restripe Manville Road to provide separate left and right turns at Bedford Road. And whereas during the Village Board's July 22, 2013, meeting, the applicant presented its portfolio comparison analysis, establishing current market demands governing the general unit count and density of any assisted living facility in the region, which demonstrated that the modern model requires approximately 84 to 90 units to remain viable. And whereas the Village Board reviewed the comments of the Planning Commission, the questions of the public, and the guidance of its professional consultants, and asked that the applicant provide further and additional analysis of the views of the site in the wintertime, provide stormwater management and grading plans, consider reducing the amount of parking spaces at the north of the site to avoid impacting the adjacent neighbor, and meet with the village's fire department and Department of Public Works to address the utility connections and emergency vehicle access to the site. And whereas on August 2, 2013, and August 8, 2013, petitioner and its design professionals met with the representatives of the Village Fire Department, the Village Department of Public Works, the Village Building Department, and BFJ to review the fire access, utility, and stormwater management plans for the project. And whereas thereafter, BFJ informed the applicant that JMC should confirm the estimated peak hours in its traffic report are consistent with prior assessments of traffic volumes performed by the New York State Department of Transportation in the vicinity of the site on an unrelated project, as well as perform traffic counts at the Bedford Road-Broadway-Bedford Terrace intersection. And whereas on August 20, 2013, petitioner submitted the following materials to the Village Board, and there is a list of, appears to be seven drawings, that are part of the public record relating to site layout and grading and so on. Should I read those in, or?
As stated in the record.
Okay. As stated in the record. Whereas certain aspects, certain aspects of the project, as reflected in petitioner's submission from August 20, 2013, had been modified further as a result of the comments of the public, the Village Board, the Village Fire Department, the Village Department of Public Works, Village Building Department, and BFJ, including, inter alia, providing emergency vehicle access behind the proposed assisted living residence and access to fire hydrants on all sides of the site, as well as a proposal to landbank seven parking spaces for additional green space and screening for neighbors, neighbors living to the north of the site. And whereas on August 22, 2013, petitioner met with the Village Board and interested members of the public to review the new materials submitted and revisions to the project, including presenting, rendering of likely winter-conditioned views of the site from public viewpoints along Maple Hill Road post-construction. And whereas on September 16, 2013, the Village Board invited members of the public to present renderings and alternate visual analyses representing how these members of the public believed the site would appear post-construction, and to explain their position on the overall impact of the project upon the character of the community. And whereas on September 16, 2013, several residents presented photographs and other renderings, including one resident presenting an approximately hour-long multimedia presentation involving two physical models, numerous digital images, and volumetric comparison of the sizes of the buildings in the vicinity of the site on either side of Bedford Road, including the bulk of the approximately 24 buildings on the approximately 35-acre Foxwoods multifamily residential development to the west of the site, as well as other buildings within the village. And whereas on September 16, again, further, 2013, approximately 10 residents living in the vicinity of the site addressed the Village Board and asked questions of the applicant relating to the long-term viability of the project, tax revenue, and other financial benefits to the village and Pleasantville School District, and the consistency of the project with the surrounding neighborhood. Whereas on September 30, 2013, the Village Board received a letter on behalf of Foxwood Condominium detailing suggested revisions to petitioner's proposed EC zoning text. And whereas on October 23, 2013, petitioner submitted the following materials to the Village Board. Again, as a matter of the record, a variety of submitted materials. which are incorporated herein. Whereas on October 28th, 2013, petitioner met with the village board and interested members of the public to review the new materials submitted. And whereas subsequent to the October 23rd, 2013, submission, the village board received various comments from members of the public, including a report assessing the project's economic impacts on Pleasantville, including a report estimating the tax benefits of the project at full capacity, as well as additional comments on visual impacts, traffic. And whereas on November 12th, 2013, BFJ directed petitioner to submit additional information regarding traffic and circulation, economic and fiscal impacts upon the village, stormwater management, utilities, and retaining walls. And whereas on November 25th, 2013, the Westchester County Department of Planning submitted a letter to JMC indicating that bus stop 1862, currently located along Bedford Road northbound just north of the site, should be relocated to an area between the proposed driveway and Maple Hill Road, and that a sidewalk should be constructed to connect the relocated bus stop with the proposed site access sidewalk. And whereas on November 25th, 2013, petitioner submitted the following materials to the village board, again, a variety of submitted materials that are a part of the public record and incorporated herein. Whereas on December 2nd, 2013, the village board, as well as its staff and professional consultants, visited the site to assess potential impacts on views from adjacent properties and to further analyze whether the project, whoops, whether the project would be consistent with the character of the neighborhood and the overall community. And whereas on December 2nd, 2013, petitioner met with the village board and planning commission on a joint public work session to review the new material submitted, including a presentation from Hudson Property Advisors, a New York State certified general real estate appraiser, regarding its empirical assessment of the potential impact the development of a senior living facility may have on adjacent residential property values, which presentation concluded that no significant adverse impact to the value of the single-family and multifamily properties adjacent to the site if the project were constructed. And whereas on December 19th, 2013, pursuant to BFJ's request, JMC submitted a memo summarizing an additional analysis of Q-lengths at the intersection of Bedford Road-Broadway and Bedford Terrace. And whereas on January 3rd, 2014, BFJ provided the village board with a memorandum indicating that JMC had addressed adequately all comments relating to traffic, that the proposed driveway design was appropriate to accommodate the turning radii of vehicles entering and exiting the site, including single unit and fire trucks, and the design of applicant's proposed stormwater exfiltration system and retaining wall would be able to fully comply with all applicable regulations. And whereas BFJ also indicated in his July 3rd, 2014 memo that its affiliate, Urbanomics, reviewed Hudson Property Advisors' value impact analyses and concurred with the empirical assessment contained therein, but sought additional anecdotal testimony to corroborate the finding that the project would not result in a significant adverse impact upon the value of the single-family and multifamily properties adjacent to the site if the project were constructed. And whereas on January 6th, 2014, petitioner met with the village board and presented the following materials, which were subsequently made available to the public, again, additional studies submitted as part of the public record. Whereas on January 9th, 2014, Hudson Property Advisors LLC submitted a response to BFJ's comments seeking additional qualitative and anecdotal assessments, summarizing additional interviews conducted with real estate professionals to assess potential impacts on property values from assisted living facilities located adjacent to residential neighborhoods. And whereas on January 13th, 2014, petitioner met with the village board and presented this additional information from Hudson Property Advisors. And whereas the village board instructed its professionals to complete Part II of the EAF, and the board reviewed such documentation at a public hearing on January 13th, 2014.
And whereas the village board has undertaken a comprehensive review and consideration of all empirical studies, expert reports, plans, and other related materials submitted by the applicant and its development team, and has carefully and thoroughly considered all comments, memoranda, and correspondence from its professional consultants and staff, the planning commission, the public, and neighbors residing in the vicinity of the site. And whereas on January 13th, 2014, the village board adopted a negative declaration under the SEACRA Act, finding that the proposed unlisted action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment based on the criteria listed in Section 617-7C, including the long-form environmental assessment form, the petition, the amendments, the project, and all materials submitted by the applicant and public relating thereto, as well as comments from involved and interested agencies, the village board, village staff, and the public, and the conditions of the negative declaration adoption were incorporated herein. Whereas the Westchester County Planning Board issued a referral letter dated March 10, 2014, on the zoning text amendment with the following comments, recommending that the village identify sites that may meet the proposed location criteria and consider those sites in the context of the village's current plans and policies, suggesting that the proposed assisted living units would be subject to the village's affordable, affirmatively furthering fair housing zoning requirements, and noting that under the county's model ordinance provisions, local residency preferences are not to be applied to affordable units. Whereas the Westchester County Planning Board issues a supplementary referral letter dated March 10, 2014, on the zoning text amendment, noting that although the inclusion of fair and affordable housing units in the project would be welcome, the board recognizes that the operational services and physical residence characteristics of each assisted living facility may make the inclusion of affordable units difficult or impossible based on financing. The targeted age and health status for residents may also create limitations on the ability of an operator to provide subsidized units. And whereas the village board has reviewed the two letters received from the Westchester County Planning Board dated March 10, 2014, on the zoning text amendment, and notes the following. The board has reviewed the other sites in the village, identified sites that may meet the proposed location criteria, and has considered those sites in the context of the village's current plans and policies. The board has considered the feasibility of inclusion of affordable units within the project, and has determined that the assisted living units would not be subject to the village's zoning provisions because they do not meet the village's definition of dwelling unit due to their lack of kitchen facilities, and has further determined that the inclusion of affordable units would not be feasible due to the particular operational services and physical characteristics of the project. And the board has determined that because the project will not include affordable units, the proposed local residency preferences are appropriate and are consistent with the village's existing requirements for assisted living facilities as contained in Section 185-16 of the Village Code. And whereas the village board held a duly noticed public hearing on March 10, 2014, on the amendments, at which time all those wishing to be heard were given an opportunity to be heard. And whereas during the public hearing on March 10, various members of the public questioned whether the floating nature of the EC district could potentially result in several assisted living facilities being developed within the village at locations other than the site, and whether the village board has assessed how many other properties in the village could potentially be applicable. And whereas on March 17, 2014, the village board received a memo on behalf of the Village of Pleasantville Planning Commission indicating that it had no additional comments on the proposed zoning text amendments and zoning map change. And whereas on March 20, 2014, petitioner met with representatives of the Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps to address concerns expressed at the March 10 public hearing as to whether PIVAC would be able to accommodate additional emergency medical calls related to the proposed assisted living facility. And whereas the village board notes that petitioner has stated that it will contract with a private vendor for non-emergency medical calls. And whereas the village board recognizes the petitioner and PIVAC agreed to monitor the volume of calls subsequent to the commencement of the facility's operation, and to work together to address any additional needs of the PIVAC. And whereas on March 24, 2014, the village board conducted a second duly noticed public hearing on the proposed local laws to amend zoning text in Chapter 185 of the Pleasantville Zoning Code, and to amend the village's zoning map, at which time all those wishing to be heard were given an opportunity to be heard. And whereas pursuant to the requirements of Section 185-58D of the Village Code and Section 277.71 of the Westchester County Administrative Code, notice of the March 10 and March 24 public hearings were provided to the town of Mount Pleasant. And whereas the village board accepted additional written comments on the amendments until noon on March 27, 2014. And whereas the village board received a letter dated March 24, 2014, from a legal representative, excuse me, representative of an adjacent property owner to the site, stating that the amendments were contrary to the 1995 master plan and constitute spot zoning, and further noting that assisted living facilities are presently allowed in the village's residence professional office, RPO zone. And whereas from the outset of its review process, the village board has reviewed project in the context of the village's 1995 master plan update and amendments to that 1995 master plan related to the Marble Avenue corridor study, and recognizes that the 95 master plan notes that Pleasantville is lacking elderly housing, but is largely silent on the means of addressing this need. And whereas the village board notes that a village's comprehensive plan is comprised of more than just a single document, and includes the policies identified during any planning and environmental assessments undertaken when evaluating whether a zoning amendment addresses identified needs of a community and as such benefits the village as a whole. And whereas the village board determined that the lack of housing and social services for seniors within the village remains an area of concern for many residents and their families. And whereas the village board recognized that the modern assisted living model is a new specialized use which emphasizes quality residential amenities and onsite recreational resources, rather than the more traditional institutional facilities which are less comparable, excuse me, compatible with surrounding residential uses. And whereas the village board further recognized that this new specialized use is not addressed by any of the existing residential or commercial regulations in the Village zoning code, as illustrated by the lack of any assisted living facilities located in the village's RPO district, which is currently the only district where assisted living facilities are permitted. And whereas the village board further recognized that the siting, bulk, density, and use provisions governing assisted living facilities in the village's residential and RPO districts do not reflect the modern assisted living models offered by quality providers in Westchester County and the surrounding areas. And whereas the village board determined that it would be prudent to evaluate whether amending the Village zoning code and zoning map as proposed by the amendments would facilitate development of a use that would address an identified overall community need to provide housing and social resources to seniors. And whereas the village board further recognizes that the 1995 master plan recommends that commercial uses in the old village area of the village, located at the intersection of Bedford Road and Broadway, be compatible with the surrounding residential neighborhood, and that the 1995 master plan supports the revitalization of the old village through encouraging businesses that serve local shopping and service needs. And whereas the village board has determined that while the site is not located within the old village, its general proximity to this area suggests that it is appropriate for the planning goals of the old village to be considered in the review of the petition because residents of the facility, their family members visiting, and employees working at the facility are likely to utilize many of the commercial establishments in this area, as well as within the village's central business district. And whereas the village board has determined that the amendments proposed by petitioner would be consistent with these planning goals by providing for locational criteria that permits assisted living residences on limited properties within the village, such as the site where such use would be compatible with surrounding uses, will foster safe and convenient access to local business, and can be developed in an orderly and well-planned manner, and providing for density, bulk, and design restrictions which would control the size and scale of potential assisted living residences. And whereas based upon the numerous, excuse me, based upon the numerous the assessments undertaken during the secret process and the public hearings, as is expressed in great detail in the negative declaration, the village board has determined that developing this facility upon the site would be compatible with the adjacent neighborhoods and consistent with the overall community character, as it would serve as a transition buffer use between the single-family residences to the east and the Foxwoods multifamily development subdivision and commercial properties to the west of the site across Bedford Road, as well as encourage the use of commercial establishments in the old village by residents, employees, and visitors of the facility. And whereas the village board also recognizes that the 1995 master plan was adopted almost 20 years ago, and since the adoption of the 95 master plan, the village and surrounding region have experienced important demographic shifts, as well as to the village's fiscal and planning objectives which were not identified or addressed in the 95 master plan. And whereas the village board recognizes that one such change since 1995 is the rapid increase and projected continued growth in the population of adults that are obtained in the age of 60 years or older, and that it is important that the village take steps to address this population growth by facilitating reasonable housing opportunities which would ensure that this age group will remain residents of the village and/or reside close to family members in the area, rather than losing this population due to the lack of any housing resources. And whereas the village board has reviewed the demographic analysis published by the New York State Office for the Aging, market studies prepared by the applicant, as well as numerous letters, testimony, and other communications from residences, excuse me, residents, each of which corroborate the village's board's conclusion that steps must be taken to provide social and housing opportunities for the rising population of senior citizens, requiring some assistance with daily living within the village and surrounding communities. And whereas the village board has determined that the amendments would permit a use of the site that would address this identified social and housing need with the village, and whereas the village board recognizes that another change to conditions in the village since 1995 is the decreasing tax base and the need to pursue appropriate redevelopment opportunities which counteract this trend. And whereas the village board has determined that the amendments facilitate the development of a use at this site that would represent a source of important tax revenue for the village that would not also, excuse me, that would not also increase significantly demands on municipal resources such as schools, which would offset such gains, and as such would provide a benefit to the overall community. And whereas the village board has further determined that the amendments facilitate the development of a use that would create additional jobs within the village, some of which may be held by village residents. And whereas the village board recognizes that even if such jobs are held by non-village residents, the increased employment would provide a benefit to the overall community through anticipated secondary economic benefits, including patronage by employees of facility, of village businesses. And whereas sound planning requires that the village board recognize these changing conditions within the village since 1995, and that it take appropriate steps after undertaking a level of comprehensive public safety of all potential impacts that has occurred in response to this petition, to ensure that the village's zoning regulations facilitate the limited development of, excuse me, of senior housing within the village.
And whereas the village board has determined that the locational criteria included in the EC district regulations, most notably the 3.5 acre minimum size requirement, the quarter-mile maximum distance from commercial and personal service establishments, as well as the half-mile minimum separation distance between two EC districts, sites, ensures there are very few, if any, other existing properties in the village which could qualify for inclusion within the EC district, thereby addressing the concerns of residents regarding overdevelopment of such use in the village. And whereas in light of the questions raised by members of the public during the March 10 public hearing, the village board's special land use council conducted additional legal analysis and issued an opinion that should the village board adopt the amendments, it would not constitute spot zoning because the amendments are calculated to benefit the community as a whole by facilitating the village's well-considered planning goals set forth herein. And whereas in light of the questions raised by members of the public during the March 10 public hearing, the village board's special land use council had advised the village board of the appropriate noticing requirements for the proposed local laws pursuant to Chapter 185 of the Village Code, including an opinion that the village board is not required to notice every property owner within 500 feet of any site which could potentially be rezoned to the EC district. As such, property owners would be required to be noticed in the event that such additional rezoning were to occur in the future. And whereas the village board's special land use council also concluded that the notice of the public hearings on the amendments was properly provided to the public in accordance with Section 185-58 of the Village Code and all other relevant state and county laws and regulations, including inter alia identifying the sites as the only land or district affected by the amendments, and mailing notice to all property owners within 500 feet of the site. Whereas the New York State Department of Transportation issued a response dated April 11th, 2014, to petitioner's request for conceptual approval of the access arrangement for the facility, and noted that while no substantial exceptions are taken to the overall design of the ingress egress to the site, issues relating to the integrity and maintenance of the existing stone masonry wall along Route 117, Bedford Road, site distance, snow removal, driver safety, historic preservation, traffic impacts, contours, and drainage would need to be addressed in advance of such a conceptual approval. And whereas on April 16th, 2014, the petitioner submitted a memoranda from John Meyer Consulting PC summarizing petitioner's discussion within the New York State DOT relative to the existing retaining wall, including, well, pardon me, located within the New York State DOT right away along the facility's frontage of the east side of Bedford Road. And whereas on May 15th, 2014, the petitioner submitted the following materials to the village board, and it includes an additional nine documents, as stated in the record. And whereas- And whereas on June 5th, 2014, BFJ provided the Village Board with a memorandum including that the revised materials submitted were appropriate to address the New York State Department of Transportation comments, the revisions did not raise any new or additional issues that were not previously addressed during the secret process, and three, that the project remains subject to receipt of highway work permit from the New York State DOT which may require additional information or coordination with the, with that agency, and that further engineering details related to the existing retaining wall may need to be addressed during the building permit process, and four, such additional issues do not rise to the level of significance that would require them to be reexamined under SEGRA. And whereas on June 9th, 2014, the Village Board reviewed the petitioner's May 15th, 2014 submission regarding the New York State DOT comments and determined that such comments had been adequately addressed. And where on June 16th, 2014, the Village Board received a comment from a resident noting that the site distance plan for the proposed driveway to the facility does not show an existing rock wall just to the south of Maple Hill Road, and the resident further suggested that this wall encroaches on the view of drivers exiting Maple Hill Road and may also hinder the view from the proposed facility entrance. And whereas on June 19th, 2014, JMC submitted the following materials to the village, which are two documents responding to the letter with a drawing. Whereas on June 19th, 2014, BFJ provided the Village Board with a memorandum indicating that it concurred with JMC's conclusion based on additional site distance analysis and that the existing stone wall along Maple Hill does not represent a site distance hindrance and that there is adequate site distance for driveway as proposed. Whereas the Village Board has reviewed the entire record of its review of this petition including the assessments of the amendments and projects compiled during the secret review process, the ground supporting the negative declaration, the 1995 master plan, and changed conditions in the community since the 1995 master plan, the comments of the Village Planning Commission, Westchester County Planning Commission, the village's professional staff and consultants, as well as members of the public, and has determined that the creation of the EC district proposed by petitioner would benefit the community by facilitating the planning goals identified in the 1995 master plan as well as those goals identified by the Village Board in response to changed conditions within the village since 1995. And whereas the Village Board acknowledges that any significant change to the project including height or density would also be subject to a separate approval process including a separate analysis under SEGRA. Whereas the Village Board has determined that the establishment of an EC district has designation of such district on the site as proposed by the applicant is consistent within, with the statement of intent and objectives in Section 185-2 Article 1 General Provisions of the Village Code of the Village of Pleasantville. And now, am I on this page right? Yes. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby grants the petition subject to the following conditions. Section 185-30.3 Locational Criteria of Article 6-A shall be revised to make clear that a proposed site must be located within a quarter-mile walking-driving distance of retail, commercial, and personal services establishes within the village, emphasis added, as consistent with the statement of intent and objectives in Section 185-30.1. The applicant should pay all outstanding consultant review fees in connections with the Board of Trustees' review of this application. C, site plan approval by the Planning Commission shall be required to implement the provisions of the requested EC district and shall be undertaken in accordance with the procedures set forth in Section 185-50F of the Village Code of the Village of Pleasantville. D, in the event the state of New York refuses to maintain or repair the existing retaining wall locating, located along the western portion of the site on Bedford Road within the New York State right-of-way, the applicant, its successors, and assigns shall be responsible for the maintenance and repair of the existing retaining wall located along the western portion of the site on Bedford Road within the New York State right-of-way in the event that the retaining wall is damaged or otherwise requires repair during such time as the site remains within the EC district. E, in the event that the applicant has not obtained a building permit and commenced construction on the site within two years from the date of site plan approval by the Planning Commission, the site will revert to its prior zoning designation of One Family Residence (RR). And the Local Law 5 of 2014 approving the amendment to the village zoning map from (RR) One Family Residence District to EC Elder Care Floating Zone District shall be null and void. F, this approval shall be contingent upon the applicant obtaining approval for a highway work permit from the New York State, from the state of New York allowing access to the site from State Road 117. Be it further resolved that the Village Board hereby adopts Local Law 5 of 2014 amending the Village of Pleasantville zoning code and the zoning map as allowed as follows. Pardon me.
You've got one more page to go.
I do?
No.
No, that's you.
Yep. Okay. 185-30-1 Statement of Intent and Objectives. In adopting this article, the Village Board of Trustees recognizes that there is an increasing societal need to provide specialized housing for senior citizens requiring some assistance with daily living. The Village Board also recognizes the equally important need to balance the goals of revitalizing the village's business districts and preserving the character of its residential neighborhoods. Locating housing for the village's senior population within proximity to the village's commercial districts while minimizing potential adverse impacts on adjacent neighborhoods can bolster the local economy through daytime patronage of local businesses in these areas without placing an undue burden on the quality of life exist, of existing neighborhoods. Accordingly, it is the intent of the Village Board to create a floating zone district permitting assisted living residences on those limited sites within the village where such use will be compatible with the surrounding uses, will foster safe and convenient access to local business, and can be developed in an orderly and well-planned manner. 185-30.2 Inclusion Within the EC Floating District. A, Amendment to the Village Zoning Map. In accordance with the procedures for amending the zoning code as set forth in Article 11 of this chapter upon its own motion or upon a petition submitted by duly authorized representative of an owner of any parcel of land within the village, the Village Board of Trustees may amend the zoning map to include such parcel within the EC district and subject to the use density and bulk regulations set forth in this article provided that such parcel satisfies the locational criteria set forth below. B, Planning Commission Review Upon the Village Board of Trustees, Including a Parcel Within the EC District. Implementation of Development Shall Be Subject to the Requirements Set Forth Herein as Well As All Other Applicable Regulations in This Chapter in Accordance with the Village's Planning Commission Site Plan Review Authority and Procedures Set Forth in Section 185-50. 185-30.3 Locational Criteria. A, The EC District May Only Be Applied to a Parcel Within the Village That Contains a Minimum Area of 3.5 Acres and Contains Frontage Along a County or State Road. The Proposed Site Must Also Be Located Within 1 Quarter Mile Walking/Driving Distance of Retail, Commercial, and Personal Service Establishments Within the Village Existing on the Date of Enactment Hereof and Accessible by State Safe and Convenient Pedestrian Routes, Traveled by Public Bus Service, or Accessible by a Private Transportation Service for Residents of the Assisted Living Residents Provided by the Operator of Such Residents. B, The EC District May Not Be Applied to Two or More Proposed Sites Which Are Located Within Half a Mile of Each Other. 185-30.4 Permitted Use in the EC Floating District. A, Assisted Living Residents As Defined by Section, in Section 85-3, 185-3 Subject to the Requirements Set Forth in This Article. 185-30.5 Use and Density Standards. A, Ownership. The Entire Site Upon Which An Assisted Living Residence Is Proposed Shall Be Maintained in Single Ownership For As Long As Such Use Exists. B, Required Features, Amenities, and Services. An Assisted Living Residence Shall Include the Following. 1, Individual Residents Containing, Individual Residential Units Containing Living and Sleeping Areas and a Private Bathing Facility or Shower. At Least 10% of the Total Number of Residential Units Shall Be Designed So As to Be Fully Accessible to Handicapped Residents. 2, Living Areas for the Common Use of Residents, Adequate Location, Number, Size, Variety, and Amenities to Satisfactorily Serve the Needs of Such Residents. Such Living Areas May Include but Not Be Limited to Living Rooms, TV Rooms, Libraries, Music Rooms, Activity Rooms, and Multipurpose Rooms. 3, Dining Areas for the Common Use of Residents, and I paraphrase here to continue. 4, Central Commercial Kitchen Adjacent to Which, From and Which Food Services Provided to the Common Dining Room. 5, Indoor and Outdoor Passive Recreational Areas. 6, Lavatory Facilities Located Near the Common Rooms. 7, Laundry Facilities. 8, Linen and Housekeeping Services. 9, Personal Care Services That Need Not Be Provided by Licensed Personnel Including but Not Limited to Assistance with Dressing, Bathing, Eating, Ambulation, and General Supervision. 10, 24-hour Occupancy by On-Site Responsible Staff. C, Optional Features, Amenities, and Services. An Assisted Living Residence May Include the Following as Stated in Detail in the Record. 1, A Central Kitchen on Each Floor of the Building for the Resident's Personal Use. 2, Kitchenettes in Individual Residential Units Provided Adequate Safety Features Are Included. 3, Sleeping Accommodations for Overnight Guests. D, Density. The Maximum Permitted Density on a Lot Containing An Assisted Living Residence Shall Be Based on the Following Site Area Requirements. 1, For Each Studio Unit, 1,250 Square Feet of Lot Area. 2, For Each One Bedroom or Two Bedroom Unit, 1,500 Feet of Lot Area. E, Occupancy. The Occupancy of Residential Units Located in An Assisted Living Residence Shall Be Restricted as Follows. 1, Each Studio Unit Shall Be Occupied by No More Than One Person. Each One Bedroom Unit or Two Bedroom Unit Shall Be Occupied by No More Than Two Persons. The Occupants of All Units Shall Be Permitted to Have Personal Aides or Caregivers Provided that Such Personal Aides and Caregivers Do Not Sleep Overnight in the Units. 2, At the Time of Initial Occupancy, The Assisted Living Residence And When Vacancies Subsequently Become Available, Occupancy In All Units Not Reserved for Staff and/or Visitors Shall Be Offered on a Priority Basis to Residents of the Village of Pleasantville at the Time of Such Occupancy, and Such Residents Shall Have the Right to Accept or Decline Such Offer. The Operator Thereof Shall at All Times Maintain a Waiting List for Occupancy in the Assisted Living Residence. All Vacancies in Such Market Rate Units Shall Be Filled by First Offering Occupancy to Each Village of Pleasantville Resident on Such Waiting List in Sequential Order Until No Names of Interested Village of Pleasantville Residents Remain on Such List, after which Time Occupancy in Such Market Rate Units May Be Offered to All Other Persons on a First-Come, First-Served Basis. If Pleasantville Resident Declines the First Invitation for Occupancy in a Market Rate Unit, Such Individual Shall Nonetheless, if he or she so desires, remain on the Waiting List for Market Rate Units in the Original Numerical Order and shall be again offered occupancy in a Market Rate Unit in such Residence on a Priority Basis when vacancy becomes available. If a Pleasantville Resident Declines a Second Invitation for Occupancy in a Market Rate Unit, Such Individual May, if he or she desires, remain on the Waiting List but shall be removed to the Last Position as it is then identified. Section 185-30.6 Site Instruction Requirements. Bulk Requirements. Section A, The Applicable Bulk Requirements Set Forth in Schedule 2 of this Chapter Relating to Multiple Dwelling Department Developments Shall Govern the Development of Any Assisted Living Residences in the EC District notwithstanding the Yard Regulations Set Forth in Schedule 2 of this Chapter. Existing or New Retaining Walls Will Be Located in Any Yard Provided that in the Event that a New Retaining Wall Is Constructed in a Yard, a Planting Strip with a Minimum Width of 3 Feet Shall Be Provided Between the New Retaining Wall and the Property Line unless the Planning Commission Waives the Requirement of Such Planting Strip During Site Plan Review. B, Height Requirements Notwithstanding Subsection A Pertaining to Bulk. The Maximum Height of Any Building in the EC District Shall Be 3 Stories or 39 Feet, Whichever Is More Restrictive. C, Landscaping. The Lot Shall Be Suitably Landscaped to the Greatest Extent Practical, and All Landscaping Shall Be Properly Maintained Through the Life of Any Use on the Lot. At the Discretion of the Planning Commission Enduring Its Site Plan Review Pursuant to Section 185-50 of the Chapter, Buffer Screening Shall Be Provided as Appropriate along Property Lines Which Adjoin Adjacent Residential Lots. Landscaping Prepared by a Qualified Person Shall Be Submitted as Part of the Site Plan Review. D, Off-Street Parking. At Least One Parking Space For Every Two Units Shall Be Provided On-Site. Such Parking Spaces May Be Located Within a Required Yard Along Any Property Line Provided a Planting Strip with a Minimum Width of 10 Feet Is Provided Between the Designated Area and the Property Line unless the Planning Commission Waives the Requirement as Further Stated in the Record. E, Access and On-Site Circulation. Reasonable Vehicular and Pedestrian Circulation Shall Exist to and From the Site, taking into consideration the characteristics of the existing street and the accessibility of the site and buildings thereon for emergency service vehicles. Not More Than One Point of Each Vehicular Ingress and Egress Shall Be Provided for Each 200 Feet of Frontage, and All Vehicular Driveways Shall Be Designed to Serve Their Intended Function and Anticipated Volume as Further Stated in the Record. F, Distance Between Buildings. Following Minimum Distances Between Buildings Located on the Same Lot Shall Be Observed. 1, Between Principal Buildings and 1 Store Accessory Building 20 Feet. 2, Between Any Two Other Buildings, a Distance Equal to the Average Height of Such Buildings at the Point Where Such Buildings Are Nearest to One Another. G, Usable Open Space. Thus Shall Be Provided Sufficient Usable and Open, Open and/or Outdoor Space for Use by the Residents, which Shall Be Appropriate in Location, Size, and Design to the Type of Development of the Residents Thereof as Further Stated in More Detail. H, Utilities. Central Water Supply and Sewage Shall Be Provided Under, Placed Underground to the Greatest Extent Practical. I, Refugees, Collection, and Storage. Adequate Provision Shall Be Made for Collecting and Storing Refugees Between Collections. Any Outdoor Storage Shall Be in Centralized Containers of Adequate Capacity to Prevent Overflow and Designed to Prevent Rodent Infestation. Screening of Such Areas Shall Be Provided. J, Lighting. Adequate Exterior Lighting Shall Be Provided to Ensure Safe Pedestrian and Vehicular Travel Around the Site. Such Lighting Shall Be Shielded from the View of All Surrounding Properties and Streets. We're almost there. We're not in assisted living yet. Be it further resolved that the Village Board hereby adopts Local Law 5 of 2014 amending the Village of Pleasantville zoning code pursuant to Section 185-58 so as to amend the zoning code and amend the zoning map of the Village of Pleasantville as follows. Section 185-5 of the Village of Pleasantville zoning code entitled "Zoning Map" herein is amended to change the zoning designation of an approximately 3.9 acre portion of the property bordering Bedford Road in the Village of Pleasantville designated on the Village of Pleasantville tax map as Section 99.15 Block 3 Lot 67 from the (RR) One Family Residence District to the Elder Care Community EC Floating District under Article 6A of the Village zoning code as established above. The Portion of the Affected Land That Is Subject to the Change in Zoning Designation to the EC District is shown as Parcel A on a Certain Map and next heretofore as Exhibit 1 which is more fully described on the document and next heretofore as Exhibit 2. Be it further resolved that these adopted laws shall become effective on filing with the Office of the Secretary of State. So that was an extended motion made by trustee Cunningham. Is there a second?
Second.
With that, we'll have a roll call vote, and I know each of the board members has comments to make about their deliberations and their vote. Colleen.
I've written down my comments. It's been a long process, and I just want to make sure that I cover everything that I'd like to cover. There have been many Pleasantville residents who have taken the time to both thoughtfully and respectfully submit their opinions and concerns both for and against the Benchmark proposal, and to all of those individuals, I thank you. I have listened to and read all of your comments and appreciate you taking the time to do so. Unfortunately, there have also been a number of residents who have behaved in what I consider to be a reprehensible manner. These so-called neighbors have acted dishonorably and excused their bad behavior all in the name of saving this village. These residents have somehow confused, disagreed with, disliked, and have gone about trying to prove their case by attacking the character of anyone who does not share their opinion. To intimidate fellow residents who do not share your opinion is inexcusable no matter what the reason or cause. Many Erie residents have also questioned the integrity of the members of this board. I take my oath of office very seriously. I am able to look beyond my own backyard, my own view, beyond what benefits me personally, and make a decision grounded on facts and based on what I believe to be in the best interest of this village. Be assured that these shameful tactics have not affected my ability to do so. Two months ago, well, three months ago, there was an unopposed election in this town. Two seats were vacant, and out of this entire village, two individuals stepped up. So perhaps the individuals who feel so comfortable attacking the members of this board, who are convinced that we are duplicitous, dishonest, and untrustworthy, should look at how you might represent the best interests of this community from this side of the table rather than trying to assassinate the character of the individuals who have already signed up and sworn to do so. Overwhelmingly, the feedback that I receive from nearly all residents is that our taxes are too high, and I agree. Our taxes are too high, and in my opinion, there is no chance of our taxes going down anywhere in the foreseeable future. Our major cost drivers are pension costs, which we have no control over, health benefits, which we have no control over, and tax certs, which we have, again, have no control over. As our tax base shrinks, the Village Board continues to aggressively evaluate our budget with a responsible financial policy that allows us to maintain a fiscally sound village now and in the future. We have worked hard to keep our tax increases low, but despite these efforts, our tax base is shrinking. If we are not able to increase our tax base even by 1%, it may not be long before the things which have made Pleasantville the place you have come to enjoy are at risk. It is my belief that this village cannot survive on a residential tax base. It is critical to our survival today and into the future that Pleasantville be open for business, that we not only welcome but invite businesses into our village that will increase our tax base and provide needed services or products. If approved, Benchmark would become our third-largest village taxpayer and would also rank in the top five of private sector employers. Many of these jobs are of better quality, higher pay than minimum wage jobs. Folks are complaining that Benchmark will only bring in 1%. Well, 1% is better than 0%. It's a move in the right direction. If we were to solicit businesses that contributed a much larger percent to the tax base, the projects would be much larger, and they would have a much bigger impact on the community. I have reviewed and evaluated the public comments, emails, and letters we have received and have assessed everything that everyone has said equally. I have serious reservations with respect to some of the petitions and additional comments that were derived from a website that were based on rumor, inaccuracy, and false information, particularly with respect to the floating zone proposal. I have reviewed the actual documents. I have reviewed the actual documents which are about this floating zone for over eighteen months, reviewed these proposals on numerous occasions with our consultants and our legal counsel, and feel confident that the proposed floating zone provides requisite language and needed protections which would not harm the Village of Pleasantville now or in the future, but rather allow us to advance and develop Pleasantville into a more complete and progressive community. I have also spoken to community members of all ages who have expressed a desire for an assisted living residential option either for themselves or for their aging parents. I have visited numerous assisted living facilities throughout Westchester County and Connecticut that are built as tightly into existing neighborhoods as the proposed Benchmark project. I have spoken to the residents who actually live in these neighborhoods, many of which were established before the construction of the assisted living facility. Without question, the construction portion of these projects was viewed as bothersome and intrusive, not unlike any construction that might take place in a residential neighborhood. But upon completion of the residence, comments without exception were that the assisted living residents and residences were great neighbors; there was relatively no impact from their perspective on traffic, noise, lighting, which concurs with the extensive analysis provided to us by Benchmark and validated by our own consultants. Many of you have come before the board or have written to us with regard to the Benchmark proposal, talk about how important our neighborhoods are. But what makes a neighborhood, what makes a village, is all of the people that live there. We are losing many of our aging residents because a facility such as this is currently not an option. I believe an assisted living facility in Pleasantville would bring a missing residential component to our computer, excuse me, to our community, and that is why I am voting aye.
I would like to speak a little bit about the processes indicated in a twenty-page resolution, and that's why I really was very supportive of reading the whole thing. I'm sorry if we bored anybody, but the process was a very important step in this whole very, very long applicant's duty here as an applicant to this village. And this applicant was introduced to us, to the village, in 2012. And that applicant met with the village administrator, the mayor, maybe one trustee, then subsequently met with two trustees, and the first thing that was considered was the zoning change. And that zoning change was not taken lightly. It was really researched, and then it went to the Village Board declaring us the lead agency. We had to notify all the boards, the Westchester County Planning, our Planning Commission, and at public meetings, we set up the protocols for what we were going to do as far as procedure. And it was very clear that we were going to accept all comments from everyone. This was an inclusive process. All of these public meetings were noticed, and there was no hidden agendas. During this time, the Maple Hill neighbors were fully engaged; they were able to ask questions, and they were able to get involved. As the steps unfolded, we received the reports, our planning consultants analyzed them, we read them, they were presented publicly, they were discussed, they were debated, and it was, in most cases, sent back to the applicant for more information. The request for more information included requests that were made by the Maple Hill residents and the Foxwood representatives, which we willingly included with all of our requests. Among the reports we received were multiple versions of the traffic study, environmental assessment forms, site plan layouts, site sections, market analysis, zoning text amendments, site grading plans, landscaping plans, comparisons, utility plans, earthwork analysis, snow storage sketches, stormwater pollution plan, geotechnical reports, economic impact analysis, Level One market qualification reports, county data book analysis, truck turning analysis, site distance plans, roof plans, value impact analysis, tax assessment data, elevation studies, emergency operations analysis. We read them all. We read them all a number of times. During this time, the Maple Hill residents submitted their own reports in which they were given a forum to present their views. During this process, the applicant revised, recalculated, and made the changes requested of them by the board. Before having to make decisions on the SICRA, the board toured the proposed site with our planning consultant, our building inspector, our DPW superintendent, our village administrator, and our village attorney. I was on crutches at the time, and I still toured the site. Additionally, through the whole process, these board members independently walked the neighborhood, took pictures to help with the perspective from the neighbor's point of view, took pictures of other sites in the village where residential neighborhoods were coexisting with large commercial and commercial residential buildings, made site visits to other Benchmark buildings, arranged complete tours of Benchmark assisted living facilities with interviews of staff and overview of the day-to-day runnings of a Benchmark assisted living facility, and finally, talked to the neighbors of those facilities. I spoke with professionals unrelated to this project, municipal planners, planning consultants, developers of a number of assisted living facilities, land use attorneys, and they all, on separate occasions, told me the same thing. This is the lowest-impact use and development. They went on to say that, once erected, those that objected to it became active in the day-to-day happenings and feel it is the best neighbor they could have had. Once the negative secret declaration was declared and additional information was provided, the public hearing was set. According to the rules and regulations set forth by municipal code, we were careful to get the neighbors enough notice. A public hearing is scheduled to hear comments from the public and place them on the record so we can consider them in formulating the resolution for final approval. There were no hidden agendas, again. We did not try to hide the zoning amendment. We did not just take what the applicant gave us and abided by it. We followed the process, and we carefully considered everything before us. In my view, in addition to those neighbors directly affected, some friends of mine that I am very fond of, I must consider the village as a whole, and those that have the right by law to position the village for development, that's our sworn duty. I must consider the impact this will have on the whole community, a community with a tax base that is carried by mostly single-family residents. If approved, I believe it becomes the second-largest taxpayer because of a tax cert in the community, one with the lowest impact. That is not a drop in the bucket. When we struggle with our budget each year, each year we struggle, to balance our exceptional services while maintaining a quality of life and ensuring public safety, every dollar means something, because it is the hard-earned dollar of every taxpayer. In fact, the strength of our bond rating is based on our ability to grow our tax base. I believe this is a good project. I very much believe in the concept of assisted living for our seniors, keeping them as part of our community, respecting their end-of-life decisions while holding on to all they have contributed to our community. I have experienced the coexistence that can benefit our community. Students performing a scene from their fourth-grade play for a group of seniors in the community room, high school students working part-time to teach seniors how to Skype with their grandchildren or their great-grandchildren, a senior resident passing on their special talents to our youth. I see opportunities. It has been stated over and over again that this will change the character of our village, but I believe that character begins with the character of the people in this village. I think that five years from now, this would be one of the jewels woven into the character of that village, and I vote aye as well.
Like Colleen and Mindy, it's been a long process, so I wanted to be concise. I've been accused as early as last week of not being so, and if you see them doing this, you know that I am rambling on. First, let me address the floating zone. Floating zones have been around for decades. They offer legitimate solutions to municipal zoning, the suggestion that we not consider them as a tool because it opens Pandora's box, nor is the fact that it can be opened by any board who wants to go through a vigorous process like the one we've undertaken. Passing on this solution does not mean it cannot be used in the future. Our responsibility is to work with our planning and legal team to find it in a way which provides the village maximum control and protection in how it's applied. The fact that it was initially written by the applicant does not disqualify it. In business, the applicants often are expected to endure the legal costs of drafting docs which describe what it wants. The recipient's legal team takes those docs, makes alterations, conforms them to their wishes. This is exactly the process which has occurred here, and I feel that the zone defines, provides the village with real control over how and where it can be applied, both now and in the future. I've also heard concerns that writing this zone text as strict as we have has created spot zoning. At its root, this is a legal question and interpretation. Not being a lawyer, all I can say is that we've challenged our legal team hard on this point, as have some of you with your outside lawyers, and the team is confident this is not spot zoning. Further, if challenged, it will be the applicant's duty to defend, and they bear the risk of any adverse ruling. While I believe we have some legal, while I believe we have some in logical legal foundation to proceed with the Benchmark proposal, the question remains, do the benefits which accrue the village outweigh the perceived cost or concerns of locating adjacent to an established neighborhood? Certainly, the demographics, as you've heard both Mindy and Colleen refer to, and the general character of Pleasantville would suggest this is both a need and a worthy addition to our community. Like the rest of the country, the fifty-five and older crowd are among our fastest-growing group. Link this with a community which prides itself, and I would say almost defines itself, as one where people move to start a family, raise their children, and finally retire to. Not having a local option for seniors to go when they're no longer able to stay in their homes seems inconsistent with who we are. In my eleven-year tenure, this board has worked aggressively to lessen tax increases, and doing so, we squeezed just about all the fat from our budget possible, offsetting other costs which tend to rise organically, such as salaries, pension, health insurance. And we've done so without any material reduction in services. At the same time, our commercial tax base has been shrinking, shifting an even greater amount of the tax burden onto the single-family homeowners. More and more people are questioning whether they can afford to remain in Pleasantville. Leaving the village once their children finish school is becoming more a reality. If they're not leaving, many still worry if taxes increase aren't further slowed, it will start capping housing values. Some already argue they have. Solving this requires either cutting services or additional revenues. Cutting services runs the risk of negatively impacting housing values and should be considered carefully. On the revenue side, Benchmark's proposal would add over $400,000 of incremental new revenue to the village and schools. The $100,000 a year paid to the village would tie them for a second as the largest taxpayer in the village. And additionally, there's tens of thousands of dollars of additional fees associated with permitting and building the facility. Once built, Benchmark would be a top-five private sector employer in the village. They've also agreed to take on the liability of a large retaining wall bordering the property, where, as we have learned in recent weeks, exists an ambiguity in ownership between the state and the village. It's been suggested by some that these issues together are not material to village residents. I respectfully disagree. However, the question remains, despite these social, economics, and tax benefits, is it enough to change zoning and locate the facility adjacent to an established neighborhood? While neighbors' concerns on the size of the building, construction, excess traffic, noise, smells, twenty-four-hour operation, strangers, et cetera, are in no doubt, are not in doubt. As a resident, I share these same concerns, too. The real question is, in practice, once established, how material will they really be? As to the building size and construction and location, I think one only need to look at Bedford Road School, where a wooded lot was cut down and the hill dug into in order to relocate a school from Bedford to Manville Road. The neighbors there faced a very similar circumstance and many of the same concerns. I think it's fair to say in hindsight, the neighborhood has not suffered. The apocalyptic concerns did not manifest themselves, and if you didn't know better, you'd think BRS had been a longtime fixture on Manville Road. Likewise, we filled the high school auditorium with residents and business owners who were concerned the rezoning of Marble Avenue would be the death knell for that corridor. Several businesses threatened to move if zoning was changed. Since enacting the zoning change, no businesses moved out, but several, as we know, have moved in, replacing most of the more dilapidated and abandoned buildings. In fact, it is tough to point out any place in Pleasantville where zoning changes in large buildings have reduced property values and lowered the quality of life in the surrounding neighborhoods. And I think that can be attributed to the uses that are benign and consistent with the character, the value of our village. Benchmark is an assisted living facility, not a school. Can it really be expected to be low-impact, neighborhood-friendly, with the potential traffic, noise, smell, twenty-four hours of operation? To try to answer the question, I did visit two of their facilities, not with the intention of touring them, although I did actually tour the Niantic one to get an idea of what it was like. It's very nice. But I toured them rather to get a feel for how the facility coexists with the neighborhood. At the suggestion of one of the neighbors here, I visited the Ridgefield facility at noon on Saturday, with the suggestion being that Saturdays are the really busy time, a couple of months ago, in Niantic during a week, during a couple of weeks ago. In both places, I knocked on the door of the residents in the surrounding neighborhoods. I asked them directly what their experiences have been like, and I asked in a way to facilitate a negative response. I was looking for a way to substantiate the concerns of this neighborhood. While neither facility is an exact comp, with Niantic having been built adjacent to a neighborhood on a site which is more commercial than that proposed, than the proposed site in Pleasantville, and Ridgefield being more rural with newer townhomes on the periphery, neighbor reactions were similar. They described generally a quiet neighbor who maintained their property and who were responsive and respectful to their fellow neighbors. Traffic was minimal. I sat in the Ridgefield parking lot at noon on a Saturday, and if I saw three cars, I saw a lot. Traffic was minimal; there were no smells; there were no strange people lingering about. The only real noise reported was the sound of a generator on its monthly cycle and occasional summer concerts in the garden, which Benchmark held for its residents. And I don't believe that was AC/DC. There were some complaints about light spill in Niantic, and Niantic, you need to understand, is a sixty-three-thousand-foot structure, three-foot structure, on two acres of land, a little over two acres of land, but it's all flat. It's not built into a hill, and the neighbors, literally, their backyards are twenty-five or thirty feet from a three-story wall, and they look at the whole wall. So there were some complaints about light spill in Niantic. At Niantic, the response from Benchmark was replacing the outside light fixtures with more directional LED lights to further reduce spill. Overall, there were few complaints, with the predominant reaction being neighbors hardly knew Benchmark was there. The neighborhoods were both, seemed alive and vibrant; the homes were well-cared-for. It was clear there was pride in both neighborhoods. If there was a negative impact in either the neighborhood's quality of life or housing values, it was not apparent from what I saw or the folks I spoke to. Additionally, I contacted the current Niantic, one of the current Niantic selectmen, who was the former chair of the Niantic Zoning Board, who presided over the zoning change in 2001 when Benchmark first applied. His description of the neighborhood angst during the Benchmark application matched what we face here in Pleasantville. Several years later, after it was built in place, he could not say enough good things about Benchmark and the facility and the positive impact on the community, including relating how one of the most ardent objectors, whose house shares the property line, I knocked on his door, he wasn't there, with Benchmark, confessed that his fears were misplaced. I went in search of validating the concerns of our neighbors to find a concrete rationale to turn down this project, which brings with it many substantial benefits. I didn't find them. Finally, there is a question, if not this, then what? Several people suggested I ignore this question. I'm not sure how you do so, considering it's clear the church is under some financial stress and seems intent on selling the property. They sought commercial development because that has undoubtedly maximized the value of their sale. If the proposal fails, it's hard to believe another developer would come and spend money if a zoning change was required. That leaves some housing, that leaves some form of housing subdivision, which, given the cost of developing a site, along with the uncertainty of ownership, the retaining wall makes it hard to believe the odds of realizing this zoning compliance solution is very high. It is easier to believe the likelihood of a religious solution, since the religious status gives, means they are given far greater latitude to develop the property regardless of current zoning. That were to happen, the neighborhood and village could end up with much of what they feared, a big building, more traffic, et cetera, with the village having limited influence over the outcome. Additionally, given the tact exempt status of the religious institutions, the village and school district would receive no new tax revenues. In closing... In closing, because there are substantial benefits which accrue to the village in the form of increased jobs and economic activity, a larger, more diversified commercial tax base, a local assisted-living alternative for our seniors, and the removal of a potential large liability from our books, because there is little evidence either here or in Pleasantville or other assisted-living complexes visited or in studies conducted through the secret process to support the magnitude of concerns offered, once the facility is operational, because we could end up with a far less desirable use if this is not passed, and in finding that the floating zone to be both valid and well-thought-through, I vote yes on this resolution.
Steve.
I'm the newest person on this board. I don't know if this is close enough, Shams is close enough? All right. And have not had the benefit, I guess, of the tenure that my colleagues have had to understand this project over the timeline that they've had. This has advantages, I think, and it has disadvantages. In being on the board for the last couple of months, I, I want to just state again, I guess, for the record, that there's no doubt that the four people you guys see sitting here and Brian Skarstad, who preceded me on this, in this chair, worked extraordinarily hard to make the process as fair and as thorough and as transparent as they possibly could. I've spent personally, for my own part, I've spent a considerable amount of time trying to get up to speed as quickly as I could on this project, understanding the details of it. I've met with residents up on Maple Hill, I've met with the Benchmark team, I've also gone to facilities owned by Benchmark, I've walked the site, and over the last several weeks, I've tried very hard to get an honest sense of what the community's feeling is about this facility. I am generally in favor of this kind of thing. My grandmother was the beneficiary of this sort of thing to the ripe old age of 101 up in Vermont, and I acknowledge there is a ready and growing need for it. I've also been very impressed with, with you guys, with Benchmark. I have visited the Niantic location and came away from the, from that place knowing that this is a class act. What these guys do, they do well. I thank you guys for your commitment to the village and your responsiveness over the last 18 months and your persistence. I wasn't there for it, but I know it happened. However, in my opinion, you have to look at something like this, not necessarily from the perspective of what you, why you shouldn't do something, but why you should do something. There is an obligation, I think, on the part of the folks that sit in this chair to think of the interests, not only of the village as a whole, but for those whose location, you know, throw of the dice, whatever you want to call it, require them to bear a disproportionate cost for whatever decisions are made at this table. Especially when something that is so irreversible comes to us, we have to look at it from both sides. Why shouldn't we and why should we? For me, that requires the standard to be very high. If you're going to vote for something that is this stridently, I guess, opposed and in some cases thoroughly opposed, something that is so irreversible, to me, that standard has to be so high. You have to have benefits that are so glaringly obvious and so irrefutable to everyone in the town that the benefits clearly outweigh the costs and outweigh the costs to those who have to disproportionately carry them. I also want to mention that those costs have to include the environment. You can't just disregard that. It's not just sightlines and views and noises and smells and whatnot. It is also the fact that there's habitat that's going to be gone there. Once it's gone, it's gone forever. There's nobody here saying that if for some reason in 20 years the facility is no longer operational, that the building's going to be torn down and returned to a field. For me, that, that's a cost. It shouldn't be swept under the rug. I haven't had a lot of discourse about it lately, so I just wanted to bring that back up again. There are environmental considerations to here, to this. I wasn't here for the secret process, so I'm not sure what that entailed, other than what I've been able to read, and I have read thoroughly on it. But, you know, let's face it, we cut the forest down, the forest is gone. So those benefits have to be extraordinarily irrefutable and come with a negligible chance of unintended consequences. They have to be sufficiently large as to outweigh the size and scale of the facility that we're considering, and considering one in a well-established neighborhood that has justifiably had the expectation that the zoning that existed there when they bought their properties would be continued. And zoning, as we all know, is designed to guide land use, so it is not something that can be changed lightly, in my view. There are undoubtedly benefits to this proposal, clear ones, and I have wrestled with this, and all colleagues on the board will know that I have wrestled with this. There are benefits to this proposal that cannot be minimized. Chiefly, and I don't need to go through them, everybody's done a good job of laying them out. For me, the increase in the tax revenue is obviously a very, very important one. The first thing I got to go through when I became a trustee was the budget process, and it is hard. And I think everybody who's more or less, I think, sitting on this side, has, you guys have to understand how hard that is. To try to keep a village like this operating without continually raising taxes is very I also don't want to minimize the value to me of an indemnification along that retaining wall. None of us knows, you know, what the future brings, but if, if that turned into a fight, that could be difficult. So that is also a material benefit, in my view. But when you boil it all down, to me, I don't believe this proposal in this location rises to the standard to be overwhelmingly overpowering on the costs that have to be paid. So my vote is no.
As you have heard here from the four people who preceded me, this is a community that has been well-served by the five, indeed six, people, Brian being the trustee who's sat here for so many months, in a very, 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 very serious effort to balance what we try to balance in lots of less prominent ways, the, the need for change and the risks of change and the effort we all hold dear to try to keep this place the place that brought us here and kept us here, which is certainly the case for me. I've lived here longer than any other place in my life and consider it to be a place that has delivered to me more than any other place I have ever lived. I know that is true for many other people, and there are many multi-generational members of this community, and there are many people who moved here 10 minutes ago who have started to feel that vibe. That obviously isn't universal, but it's a core piece of what Pleasantville is about. That's what motivated all of us to sit here, and that's what motivates us all tonight to balance what you have already heard in a very clear explication of the pros and the cons about how to manage this particular problem. I do want to comment that there have been moments in this process, and I have spent hours and hours and hours, not only here with my colleagues, but with many of you. I, I thank the engagement of, of so many community members, but I cannot overlook the fact that there were community members here who, in my judgment, purposely obscured the facts, purposely made the path more difficult for this board to engage the community in the discussion we needed to have. That is obviously a problem for us. It's a problem for this applicant and for applicants in general in a community that cannot remain the way it is. We seek desperately to maintain the best parts of this community, and we will continue to do that, but if anybody believes that we can slam the door behind us and freeze this community with no change, you need only to look back over the last couple of decades and the many positive changes that have happened to realize that absent significant changes, careful, thoughtful, Pleasantville-scale changes, this won't be the place we are trying to protect whether we like it or not. So I, I implore all of you who have been such constructive members of this discussion and the few of you who I think have not been, to come back to center and to explore this and future discussions in a manner that leaves this room freer for all. I can tell you that in an emotional discussion, there are obviously members of the community who do not feel free to speak in a public setting because that's their preference and they prefer to deliver messages privately. I have never, in the now 13 years I have served in this capacity and the several years on which I served the Planning Commission before, had so many people come to me that, and say, "I don't feel safe to speak." That is in Pleasantville. That will not make this a better community. That will not bring the people we need in this community to come and make investments in it. That will not create the multi-generational community that we all depend on. And for those who say, "This is a, a proposal that is brought in by developers who have no interest in the community to build an extraordinarily expensive thing for people who don't live here," I, I ask you respectfully to look at that again and to reconsider what this all means. That doesn't mean we roll over and play dead. There are very significant concerns here that all of us have to grapple with, and God knows, all five of us have grappled with it. When this process started, I said, as I know many others of you have said to the Benchmark crew, "You engage a steep climb." This is obviously a difficult site to develop. It is a site that presents not only a significant set of problems, but also a history of contentiousness with a series of proposals that are founded for one reason or another, and I think were almost universally opposed and vigorously so by the, by the neighbors. So that is a legacy that has an effect on this church that owns that property and has been in this community for centuries, literally centuries, and they have a stake in this as well. I say all that as preamble to the circumstance that I find myself in. As I have said to a number of people, there is no happy vote here for me. Should this project fail, the community will be deprived of what I judge to be a quality provider of these services. We will be deprived of a link in the chain of the multi-generational community that we hope to have, and we will be deprived of all of the material benefits that my colleagues have so clearly explored. Should the project be approved, we will be deprived of the opportunity to add something to this community in an environment in which the community has at least, in general, coalesced around it. It is important to me to balance my role as an independent thinker who looks at matters and tries to decide what to do, and my role as the elected representative of all of you. Part of that process has been difficult because it has been so difficult, really, to get to the bottom of what people think, and I have found myself in, in a number of people's living rooms to try to explore that, and I thank them for that opportunity to have those discussions in a less formal setting. So I have been up late at night thinking about this, just as all of us have, and I have come to the conclusion that I will vote no. The regret I have with that is that because of the requirement of the supermajority, the project will fail. I say that, and I say to Benchmark, it is with great regret that that is the case because I believe you people have come to us with a sound idea in a very, very difficult setting. You have been thoughtful, careful, respectful, and responsive. You and your, your consultant team have been, represented your case extremely well, and I appreciate that. And the last thing I would like anybody to think is that this is a community that isn't interested in welcoming that kind of opportunity. In this case, unfortunately, you've got an awful lot invested in this, and I have often said in this process that our goal in life is to try to say no as soon as we can, if it's going to get to no. And I can tell you with conviction that it took this long to get to no. It is painful to me that that has caught you in the crossfire, and it is painful to me that the neighbors have been left in, in the position they've been left in as well. So all of that leaves us with a circumstance that our message to the community is that the project has not been approved. Our message to the development community is that you are talking to a community based on the split vote that you see right here that is very, very, very interested in trying to find a way forward for this community. So with that, I thank you for your attention, and we will continue this conversation over the next weeks and months. Is there a motion? Is there any new business?
Nope.
Is there any comment from the public on this or another matter? Certainly not looking to engage any extended discussion. Motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening, good night.
Thank you.